Chanel, we ready?
You bet.
Is Maria coming today, Mike?
Uh, no idea.
She should be here.
I'll text her.
Okay.
I feel like I've either seen or talked to her multiple times every day. She didn't mention it. Yeah.
Well, good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to our, our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday, the twenty-third day of November, twenty twenty. This year's marching along. It's gone fast. Um, we'll begin this morning with a prayer offered by Kathy Riggs. And following her prayer, we'll have a pledge of allegiance led by Marilyn Wood.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this beautiful day and for the blessing that is ours of living here in this great country and in this county. We thank thee for our forefathers that established a way for us to be active participants in, in process and representing ourselves and having laws that help direct the things that we, we are able to do and accomplish. We thank thee for all that we receive from thee and we pray that during this meeting today that we will have positive interactions and accomplish the business that has been set forth on the agenda and the things that are waiting to be presented. We thank thee again for all that we have for the blessing of living here where we do in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kathy, for that beautiful prayer. We will, let's see, do we have any minutes, Chanel?
No.
Not today? Okay. We are mindful of our clerk. He's, he's still down, but he's getting better, I expect, within the day and he's, he's feeling better. Still got a lingering, some lingering things, but we're glad that he's on the mend. We, uh, we'll go to, um, go to departmental reports and we'll start with Dan Jesson, our auditor.
Okay, you guys will hear from me a little bit today. So I'll try to be quick. So I guess first thing I'll talk about is, um, we're wrapping up the CARES, um, funding. All of the paperwork and, and spending on that. We had a deadline of the thirtieth of November to get all that money spent. And so we've been working hard at that. Some of the, the, the things that are still just trying to get wrapped up are, um, we have, we're doing some private grants to Shakespeare Festival, Cedar Breaks, and Care and Share and Canyon Creek Services. And I think that's it. And so Zion, yeah, I said Cedar Breaks and Zion, yeah, which we, we talked about in an earlier meeting, but, but, um, we, I, I, those were different than the, than the CARES Impact Grant, which we had already, everything online for them to sign and all that stuff. So we needed to get an agreement in place with these, with these guys. And Mike got that back to me and I got it sent out and I have two of them back. My goal is to get those checks cut before we leave for Thanksgiving. And I think we're on track for that. I'm just answering a few questions, but everybody has been, um, really super grateful for, um, for that money, for their, um, their different entities so that they can get through it specifically. With Care and Share and Canyon Creek, uh, they met with the commissioners and myself a while back. They, they're at capacity like normal, but now they've mixed in, um, they've been having people come in that are tested positive. They can't mix them in with, with everybody else. And so they have to try and separate them. And that's really tough when they're already at fully capacity. So, um, we've worked with them to find some, some additional housing so that they can, they can quarantine people before they mix them into the, to the populace and stuff. So that's been really good. They had a, a cry for help. I think about anything that they do is, is explicitly, um, allowed under the CARES money. Caring for homeless, food delivery and things like that. And so, um, that's definitely something that, that fits under those, those entities. As far as the Shakespeare Festival and Cedar Breaks, um, the, that's justified under the same premises. We are doing the Impact Grant in that their entities have been financially, um, impacted by the, uh, by the, um, the pandemic. So anyways, we're trying to get that done. We're, we're working on the, the senior citizen thing. Paul's been, you know, writing hurt on that. And they've been, they've been moving quickly. And they've committed to try and get their last invoices to us, um, hopefully, hopefully this week is what Chad said, right?
Right.
So we'll get that paid. Um, they're actively, um, they're just tearing along. They're probably done with framing by now, aren't they?
They framed the walls and they've got all the sheeting trusses will be here tomorrow. So the roll trusses tomorrow and, and, um, they're moving along. They'll have it framed, uh, you know, of course, for Thanksgiving. I'm not sure. Uh, the one young man I talked to, he acted like they were working all week.
That's been a really neat project to see. Normally things move a lot slower than, than this is by necessity had to move. But it'll be good to get our senior citizens, um, some expanded space there.
The biggest thing right now is, is with, you know, just the delay in materials and like the elevators out, you know, more than normal. You know, luckily they, they ordered the windows. They're here, you know, they're, they're doing good, but there's, there might be a few delays on getting some things.
Yeah, it's been a, it's been definitely challenged with supply chain interruptions. And I think, you know, George correctly talks about how, um, Iron County was wise to jump on the front end of getting, getting the stuff going. A lot of other agencies trying to meet this same timeline have been struggling, um, because everything gets pushed back and on back order. And if we have to have the money spent, it makes it a challenge. Uh, we've wrapped up BOE and abatements. Of course, you're aware of that because we do that in this meeting. But I just wanted to thank Christine and Carrie. They do a lot of work and spend a lot of time on that. It's a critical, critical function of, of my office. We, yes, last week was UAC. Um, those that attended, it was all virtual. It was going to be in person right up to the very last minute. After the governor's recent announcement, they decided to do it virtual. The auditors had a good discussion, which, um, due to the pandemic, we held the tax sale online. A lot of counties don't have the number of, of parcels that we do. And so some counties canceled theirs. Some of them just, they just pull, they withdrew the, the, the parcels that were on auction, which I'm not sure how legal that was, but they did that. And so this next year, now they're going to have twice the, twice the auction. And we're still in the middle of this thing. So I'm glad that we held ours. Um, as you know, we did it online. And I've been trying to work to get a bill run so that we can make that explicitly allowed under Utah code. It's not like it's disallowed. It's just that it's kind of vague. It says you're supposed to have the tax sale at the courthouse. And if we're running it online from the courthouse or we're doing it from the courthouse, I'm not sure. But all the auditors were very interested in finding out exactly how that went for us. And, um, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest in being able to do that online. We're going to have to make that decision again ourselves this upcoming April, whether we want to do it online again. There's some talk about having UAC, um, if, if, especially if we can get it explicitly allowed under the law, UAC run that and host that, um, rather than hiring a for-profit company out of Pennsylvania or wherever the company that we, that we use. They did a fantastic job. It's just, um, I, I hate using a for-profit company, um, when, if there is any premiums off of the sale to, to be captured, I would rather it be captured by UAC, which would help us with our dues rather than to, to a for-profit company. Plus we'd have a little bit more control over the process. We'd make the fees more reasonable and things like that. Anyway, so working on that and I gotta get somebody, Evan said he'd sponsor a bill, but he, he told me about the politics of things and who I needed to talk to at the legislature to make sure we get, we get support. So I'm about ready to have a baptism by fire of the legislative process, being inside it, rather than just playing defense every year to stupid laws. But, uh, finally, um, as you know, we're into, we're in full budget mode, um, on both, uh, getting ready for the, amending the twenty twenty budget for the last time and, um, and setting the twenty twenty-one budget. Normally we would be doing one of those in this meeting. Given everything that's going, going on with the CARES grant and, and how busy we've been with that, we decided to postpone both of those public hearings until December's meeting. And so we're going to do that in, in December fourteenth. So we'll have a public hearing and, um, we'll have time to kind of get everything fine tuned. I, both budgets are moving along nicely. But we, we would have been really rushed to try to get either one of them on this, on this meeting. So anyway, still working through a few things. I, I would really be turning a lot of my attention towards the twenty twenty amendments. Um, this is where we, we take a look at where we're at for the year and try to clean up any problems and deal with any last minute things before we set this budget forever in stone and, and hope we don't go over. So if I reach out to any of the department heads, please be reactive. I have a lot of notes, things that come up. And so, uh, we'll go ahead and make those adjustments next meeting. So that's all I have. If anybody has anything for me. Thank you.
So thank you, Dan. Sure appreciate all you do.
You rock.
Maria, you're up. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, baby.
Good morning. So, uh, budget, so to date we've spent eighty-five percent of our tourism department budget. And twenty, twenty-eight percent of our restaurant tax. A lot of that is because we had over two hundred thousand dollars of projects that have asked to move that into the twenty twenty-one budget. Due to COVID, they did not, um, do their project or didn't start it. And we have an agreement in place that they can transfer the money or move the money for one additional year if they needed to. Collections, so TRT is down six point five percent. But restaurant tax is up slightly to three percent. Occupancies are down overall ten percent as well as our average daily rate, which is about seven percent. In hindsight, these are good thing. And I mean, it's hard to say that's a good thing, but considering what we were looking at originally when COVID hit, you know, forty percent was the number that kept being tossed around. So, um, we are, we're pleased. Where we're currently sitting, um, we wish it was better, but, um, we're okay with where it's at. Uh, I've included, if you look in your packet, there's a, a graph that the Kemsin Gardner Institute put out about, where all the counties were in terms of their TRT. And if you look, I mean, there are actually a couple of counties that were doing, actually had an increase. But these are very, very small counties. Um, they don't have a lot of infrastructure. They don't have hotels. And so of course, you know, you know, they're going to see, they would probably see an increase, um, just because of how much people are going outside and doing, um, getting out and about and how open the state of Utah was. If you really look into it a little bit, Beaver and Iron are really, and San Pete, um, kind of look to be the counties that did, who have infrastructure, who are, who have, you know, a good tourism base, seem to be doing better than, um, quite a few of the bigger counties, um, like Grand is down forty-four percent, San Juan sixty-four percent, Washington County twenty percent. So we feel, we feel okay. We do have a Visa View report that comes out, um, that we track all the spending in our county that is not associated, that's not local. So it's non-local spending, um, and so our reports are coming in and traveler spending during the period of COVID. We lost six point seven million dollars in the second quarter, um, but it was up three point nine, nine million in the third quarter. So our total loss through September was two point eight million dollars in traveler spending. Every indication, September and October were definitely some of our best months. Probably October, October was the best we had ever seen. So I'm hopeful that will bring us back to where we'd like to be. Uh, current efforts are on marketing the holiday season. And so we're working hard on that. The Restaurant Tax Board met last week and they have made the following, the following recommendations. You can see them in that list. About five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in projects were, um, recommended to the, to the county commission. Two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in projects will be covered, carried over from last year. And then we also had some requests for the county in terms of, uh, supporting school tournaments and races. Half of the Woods Ranch bathroom, uh, some money for the OHV grant, um, some restaurant marketing money, um, and assistance with our travel trade contract, which is a little, that is basically our international marketing contract. We, we hired this lady to help us with that. And even though international is pretty much a zero, um, the planning of aspect of international travel is several years out. And so we want to make sure that that contract is still in place. We want to still make sure that we're doing the activities that we should be doing, um, so that when the, when the borders do open up, we're ready. Any questions regarding tourism? Kept it brief today.
Not for me. I, I feel like we've spent, I was telling these guys earlier, I just feel like we've spent like the last two weeks just hanging out. I've got a good grasp of what's going. I feel like we've.
Oh, you and I have been hanging out.
I, I feel like we've spent an awful lot of time together the last few weeks.
Yes, we have.
I have no question.
So, um, I did want to report on the, the school tournaments. Over nine hundred teams participated in tournaments, the baseball tournaments here in Iron County over the summer. So.
Well, and that's what I was going to say is I think because we have these activities, we survived, right?
We survived.
With the tournaments, the, the concert, the parade, all of them.
All of those things, yes. And it's so interesting to talk to people in the state because, we are a bit of an anomaly and the state people are like, wow, you, you held all these events, no super spreader. You know, you absolutely proved that you can do this. And so we were the example in which other counties were able to move forward. So, you know, good for us. It was a big, big effort.
And it was interesting to track those numbers because we, I mean, we were on the seven day rolling average, you know, between seven and eight, even down. And then even after our Iron County Fair, which was record turnout, it dropped clear down to two, you know, two or three weeks after that. So it just goes along with outdoor activities seem to be relatively safe.
The issue, baseball has said that they will be coming back next year at the same level that they were this year. So fourteen tournaments for next year. So it's a good deal.
What's this sound study for Shake? I just curious, just looking at this. Is that, they still having troubles with their sound?
So, you know.
With the, with the compressor and all that or the?
No, it's more like the sound from the street and the sound from, the ambient sounds. And so they can't do, they couldn't do the study this year because they didn't have a crowd. They didn't have an audience. So, um, they'll do that next year. But yeah, this, they, even with closing the street, they still have quite a bit of sound that is from the outside coming into the theaters. And so they, what they want to do is they want to do this study, which will help them, um, identify areas and ways to reduce that sound. Like, you know, putting up some baffling, you know, where maybe they should plant some more trees, you know, those kinds of things. So.
And that was a carryover from last year, right?
It's a carryover from last year. As far as outdoor recreation, and I'll be pretty brief on this one, um, we're at eighty-five percent of our budget, which is right where we need to be. We had a great tour of the five mile picnic area. We're looking forward to seeing how that turns out and hope that we can get that online, um, quickly. We will need to have a budget established for that. Um, there's quite a bit of work ahead of us. We had, uh, two house, uh, two high school mountain bike races at Three Peaks. Over fifteen hundred riders plus their parents and staff. So that was a, that was a big deal. And we are, we will possibly host the championship next year, which is fifteen hundred riders for one race. So pretty impactful in the month of October. We definitely saw impact to our camping, um, our, to date, our parks have generated over ten thousand dollars in camping fees and pavilion fees. We just want to say, um, we want to say thank you to Bruce and, um, Commissioner Adams for getting us two trash cans for the winter time up at, uh, Woods Ranch. That'll be a big deal. That will be very helpful, particularly with the ice shrink. The ice shrink is moving along. It looked like they were putting water in it over the weekend. So I think they'll be open, hopefully it'll be open in time for Thanksgiving. So.
I talked to Carrie a little bit. She said they, they needed to freeze the ice and then get in there to put the chain link fencing up. So it might be a few days. It might be this one next weekend. Um, you know, they, they just couldn't walk on the, the lines they painted. So they wanted to get the ice on top of the lines and then they could get on the ice to put up the fencing.
Okay, makes sense. Well.
About three inches.
We've already had groups calling in regards to the ice shrink and we've been referring them to Carrie. So, but adult ice hockey has been the question of the day. We did have, if you remember, we had some vandalism at Woods Ranch with some paintballers. Um, we did have a camera on and it did capture the images of them, but they were underage. Or we thought they were underage. We did turn that over to the sheriff's office. They did some, um, social media to get the word out to see who they were, if they could be identified and they came forward. So ten juveniles were involved and we've worked, worked it out so that they will, they will do the restitution by doing some cleanup out at the shooting range. Other than that, that's all I have on parks. Any questions?
Sounds good.
Alright. Thank you.
I just want to take like thirty seconds and thank Maria. There, she had a bad situation at the visitor center last week.
I didn't want to bring it up.
The, long story short, there, there was an intoxicated lady, uh, in the visitor center that ended up, passing out in her own mess. She vomited all over the bathroom, made quite a mess, uh, ended up being transported by medical. But Maria was really concerned for their, uh, little, uh, cleanup girl that comes in after hours and thought that if we expose her to this, there's no way she'll ever come back. And so, uh, but Maria and Stephanie Orton as well, cleaned the mess up.
Well, Mike helped as well, but.
It was a group, it, it was a group effort.
It was a group effort.
It was a group effort, but that was, I, I mean, really that was over and above and that, that was really cool to see Maria's concern for her staff and for her facility and, and that, it, it was just cool. Thank you for.
I would just like to say thank you to Stephanie Orton and Amber Bennett, my staff. They handled the situation for quite a while before I got involved. Because she seemed, she appeared to be normal, um, when she first came into the building. But they handled her very well and I wanted to say thank you to them. So, and thanks to Mike for coming and.
Thanks to all of you.
It was a, it was a great group effort, but it was, it was just really cool to, you know, Maria really had some, I mean, she was really concerned about her staff and her facility and, and it, it, it worked out good. It was a bad deal there for a minute that turned out pretty positive. So it was cool. So thank you for, just thank you for being a good egg. That's it.
Bringing it up.
I know, but it's, she'll be alright. Maria's pretty resilient.
Sheriff.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm, I'm well, thank you. Let's go ahead and jump right in. Talking a little bit about current law enforcement issues. We've been extremely busy. In about a one week period of time, in October, we recovered seven deceased bodies. It started with the recovery of the remains of Carol Stratton, who if you recall was a missing person that had disappeared, uh, last October and had been missing for almost a full year. Her remains were discovered by a young man that was clearing, uh, filled a sagebrush for pasture and, uh, came across her remains. So we're, we're very grateful for all the citizens of Iron County that have, uh, not forgot Carol and have, uh, continued to search for her and have helped us throughout our search efforts as well. Our hearts go out to their family and, uh, we're glad that at this time that they can at least finally have some closure on their whereabouts of their wife and mother. We also had a wildland fire in the Bumblebee area. Uh, when the airstrike flew over, they reported to us that there was a vehicle in the middle of that fire. Upon investigation, we found a Jeep that had left the roadway several times. And eventually had left the roadway, became high centered and, uh, the, uh, driver apparently passed out in the vehicle. Vehicle started the wildland fire and consumed, uh, the individual. We recovered the skeletal remains of what anthropology is preliminary, preliminarily identified as a Hispanic male, approximately thirty-five years of age. It was, uh, the remains were located in the Shirts Canyon area and are believed to be at least ten years old. That's, uh, still under investigation. We're not sure if we'll ever be able to identify who that subject is or not, but we're, we're looking, working on that. We had a fatality traffic accident on Canair Mountain Road in which a female driver was, uh, headed westbound on, on the road. As she came around the bend in the road, the sun hit her in the eyes, causing her to miss the turn and, uh, went over the embankment and resulted in, in her death. And, uh, again, our, our, uh, thoughts are, are with her family. We also had a suicide, which as we move into the holiday season, we want to remind people that while many of us find joy and happiness, there's those that are out there that are filled with sadness and depression. We need to be aware of those members of our community and strive to get them the help that they need. And if there's anything that the sheriff's office can do to assist them during this period of time, then we, hope that people will get in hold of us and let us reach out and try to, to help them find, uh, answers to their problems. hope that people will get in hold of us and let us reach out and try to, to help them find, uh, answers to their problems. In addition, we also had two attended deaths during that period of time, uh, which, uh, has always been a concern to us. Uh, when people are having medical crisis and, and are not calling for medical aid, that's a concern. So we, again, hope that everyone will be aware of these things and will, uh, help us to help them get the help that they need. Within the sheriff's office, we've initiated a monthly leadership course to help develop our deputies and civilian staff, uh, to reach their leadership potential. And our awards program is nearly completed. The awards have been designed and submitted for purchase and I'm currently reviewing the policy formalizing the awards recognition process. Uh, that awards committee has done a very commendable job in organizing this program and I'm grateful for all their efforts to make this program a great success. And I just wanted to express my thanks to the commission for, for supporting that program in our budget as well. Current strength of our patrol side is we are currently down two deputies that are close to filling those positions. Acting background investigations currently. Deputy Gower, uh, was placed on long-term disability as a result of his snowmobile accident last year. And, uh, so we hope that he'll be able to, to recover, but, uh, at this point, we're just trying to help him get through long-term disability to become retirement eligible. We also hired Deputy Josh Nelson and we're happy to have him. He came to us from SU Police Department. He's, uh, I, I worked with him years ago at Cedar Police Department and then he went to SU and was the acting chief there for, uh, what, probably three years now, I guess. And, uh, so we're, we're happy to have him and all of his experience and welcome him to the sheriff's office. Under our future ops and concerns, uh, vehicles is always a big issue. We very much appreciate what the county commission has done to help us replace vehicles over the past two years. Uh, we've recently received delivery of two new K nine vehicles, a new traffic vehicle and three new patrol vehicles. This is a big help, uh, though we still have a ways to go in order to, you know, get all our vehicle fleet back to where it needs to be. And we're, uh, extremely hopeful with, uh, Dan Jensen's fleet program plan. Uh, I think that's going to be a tremendous help in getting us where we need to be and keeping those vehicles where they need to be. So I, I applaud the county commission's support of that program. On the jail side, um, you know, we, we've been discussing the potential of building a, a new jail facility. As ours is the oldest in the state and has, uh, pretty much reached its, uh, its limit. We've, uh, made arrangements to visit with the Kane County Jail's, uh, facility in December. And, uh, they're ready for us and, and are excited to have us come over and take a look at that jail. Last week, I also had the opportunity of going to the Cache County Jail. I didn't have the opportunity of, of, of visiting the jail itself. But I talked quite extensively with Sheriff Jensen. It's a different design from what the Kane County Jail is and may be another good option. So we may want to consider looking at, at that one as well. On the budget side, uh, budget side, we're doing pretty well overall. There's two areas that, that are, have been difficult areas for both the sheriff, the patrol side and on the jail side, uh, the overtime side and the pre-employment expenses. And both of those have to do with, with just being short-staffed and, uh, going through the process of, of identifying those that are, are good candidates and eliminating those that aren't good candidates. And it's a, it's a little bit expensive, but it saves us a lot of, of heartache down the road. Uh, overall, the three sheriff's budgets, jail, uh, patrol and, and, uh, search and rescue are at about seventy-eight percent total for the year as the end of October. Again, I just also want to thank the commission for their help and support for the upcoming twenty twenty-one budget. Are there any questions for me?
No, not for me.
Great report. You've been busy.
We've been busy, so.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. Appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Shalom, how are you? Good, thanks.
Alright, our budget's on page four there. Um, we're at about seventy-eight percent like the sheriff said. Um, our, our higher, our higher percentage is again exactly what the sheriff said from, um, staff shortage and hiring. Um, I feel that we're, we're on a good. We're gonna get there. We're gonna get all that, that overtime cut down. Um, right now, we're down three, three staff members. We've, um, we had an incredible hiring roster that came in a, a few weeks ago. I was, I was blown away with the candidates that we have. We haven't had a hiring roster like that in a long time. Um, we made an offer to one. She's passed our background and, um, she's accepted. Um, she'll be brought before the commission in the next couple of weeks. And then we have two, one medical deputy and one line officer that are right there, right there also, so. That will help us. Um, we don't have anybody in the academy right now and they're, our new guys are almost off of FTO. So I think that that's when you'll be able to start seeing a big decrease in our overtime. Um, our, our culinary costs, they've gone up a little. That was expected. And they're at a dollar three per tray. Our total bookings have also gone down. That's also expected through COVID. Um, we, we're housing a lot of federal inmates right now, about double what we did, uh, pre-COVID, which is good for, um, reimbursement. Uh, causes us kind of a headache on the post-senencing angle, but our state inmates, we've still been, still been able to maintain ten. Our inmates transported, of course, have gone down. They've done, uh, they've started to do a lot more video court. Um, we did have a issue where their attorneys were calling in to talk to their clients. Um, we, we still, we still ha- we will still do that for them, but, um, our public defenders have actually started to come in. They sit in that attorney booth while the court's going and so then they just, just kind of like they did in Fifth District Court before. They just call them in and talk to them thems, uh, while they're doing the WebEx. So that's been helpful as far as, um, freeing up our staff to do other jail business. Our work crew has, had to temporarily cease due to, we don't have any inmates that qualify to go out on the work crew. So he had to stop. He, every day he comes in to check if there's somebody that he can take to go help out, but, um, that's where we're at, right?
Is it just, just mostly personal skills or?
No, we.
What else do you look?
They go through a screening process, um, their criminal history, their current charges, um, that kind of stuff, so that we don't send dangerous criminals out into the, to the community. Um, we don't have anybody that qualifies. Workers are hard to come by these days, so. But we'll get that back running when, when we can find somebody. Um, we did ha- we'd had, had one long-term military leave just recently. Our planned projects that we have, we're gonna purchase that door for Jay Black. We, we're not gonna get it in by the end of the year, but we're gonna try to get it purchased so that it stays on this year's budget. Our activities that we've had, um, we had a very successful, um, PR event. We had a trunk or treat on the front lawn. Um, I thought it was a crazy idea, but it was so successful and the community loved it. I, it was, it kind of blew me away, but it was, it was good. Uh, we had a line that went all the way up DL Sergeant, all the way to the, um, dispatch building up there for two and a half hours. It didn't stop. So it was, it was incredible to see the turnout. Um, we have our SU intern. We're doing our policy review. Our onsite jail programming, visiting and booking releases are still closed down. We do have, um, the school district has sent us a teacher, so we're still teaching high school. And we've offered all of the clergy, all of our clergy volunteers to send us in videos weekly. If they want to do a thirty-minute video and publish it for, um, our inmates, but we haven't had anybody take us up on that. So we've been asking for that for nine months and they, they just say they just don't want to make a video of themselves. Um, we have had a few inmate groups, um, ask if they can teach certain different, um, denominational classes on their own, so we have made the space available for them if they want to teach their own. So we ha- we've been trying to help out with that, um, access to clergy. Um, it says prisoner, prison not accepting inmates. They started last week and they're, it's, it's pretty hectic getting, getting them in there, but we're, we're still pushing because we're housing seven of their inmates just waiting to, their BOP inmates, Board of Pardons inmates, trying to get them up in there, but. Any questions for me?
How were we doing on COVID in the prison?
Um, last week, we, we kind of had a, a little incline, um, so my staff's wearing masks now. And we, we're do- we're doing okay. We're able to, we're able to quarantine the ones that we have. Um, we had a couple staff, but, um, we've been able to keep track of it and monitor it. We're, I think we'll make it. We're do- we're doing way better than the facilities next to us, so we're, we're doing really well that way.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
You, shalom, appreciate it. Kathy?
They're up there. Did you get the handouts up there?
Yeah, we've got.
I've handed them out, yeah.
Okay. That's gonna read.
Okay, let me.
Want me to get Jared? Call Jared.
Is this Logitech yours or is it somebody else's?
That one stays in there, that's.
Okay. I was gonna see if we could switch them, but.
Hey, are you still in the building? Chanel broke, Chanel broke the internet. Okay, thanks. Whatever it is, he saw it before we did.
There we go. Well, I don't want to go there. I want to go here. Good job, Jared. Uh, we're happy to be here today to give our report for the Iron County Office of USU Extension. We're a little bit better prepared this year than last year when I was punting, uh, for, for Chad at that time. And, um, we're excited this year for the things that we've been able to accomplish despite, uh, despite a lot of changes in our office. And I asked every program area individual to just do a, a quick highlight report. This is not an extensive report. But, uh, you, as commissioners, have our, the detailed report. And then for the pleasure of the audience, we put together a short slide presentation as well that we'll go through. I've asked, let's see, here we go. That didn't go to the next, there we go. There we go. So I'm gonna have Randall take just a, the first couple of minutes and then I will complete the report for the other programs. Just do the arrowing. You ready?
Good morning. Good to be here again. Um, yes, I, again, I'm, I'm Randall Violet and I came to the commission, um, back in June, I believe, and, uh, was introduced to you, so I am the, uh, natural resource agriculture agent now. Um, and I came here, uh, from, you guys pilfer a lot of people from SUU, I noticed. Um, and so that's where I came from, was from SUU. So anyway, uh, it's, it's been a great, uh, six months, five months, uh, in the position. And, uh, have a, an overview of what I've been up to. And basically, pretty much coming in with, uh, what Chad had, uh, created and established and I'm just making sure that, uh, we're continuing with that. And, um, so the, uh, water, the aquifer depletion project and, and water conservancy is, is a huge issue for not only just Iron County, but also the state of Utah. And there's a significant amount of funding that we have. Um, Utah State, uh, University has received a, a very large grant, uh, to do some, uh, water monitoring, uh, both in agriculture and in, um, uh, just aquifer mi- uh, aquifer, um, monitoring as well. And so we've been involved with that for several years. Um, and the, the project out at Brent Hunter's place is coming to a close. We've had three years of data on it. Um, with various different sprinkler, uh, nozzles and, uh, application. And, uh, I guess, we don't have a, a formal report produced yet, but kind of the general look at the, the data at the very onset. Um, it looks like we've identified a set of nozzles. They, they're called LEPA nozzles, which is low-energy precision application. Um, and those nozzles tend to be most effective. Uh, we're seeing, uh, a, a lot of LEPA nozzles being put on, a lot of s- center pivots, uh, throughout the valley, uh, as well. And, uh, the yields are, are high and the, the water conservancy is great, so it's been a, a win-win deal there.
Do you have any idea on the savings, the percent of savings of water with the LEPA system?
I don't. Until, until we get all that comparison work done and stuff, um, I, I don't have a number for you per se, yeah. But it's, it's significant. Um, we are, we are seeing a significant savings there.
I, sorry to interrupt, but I, just another question on that system. I had, and I asked this question at the, the water meeting, the Central Orange County Water Conservancy District Board meeting the other night, but you see some new pivots going up. I, I noticed driving down the freeway, I think there was a couple of new ones in Parrow and off the freeway and, um, do, do you think most of the agriculture folks know about this new, the new LEPA and, and that? Because where they're, I noticed the new pivots were put in, they didn't have them on, and I think it's a lot cheaper to obviously buy them that way than retrofit them, correct?
Retro, right, yeah.
We have a good program and it, maybe they cost a lot more to buy them that way. I don't know how much.
Well, you have, on a typical.
You have more draw-ups.
Seven tower pivot, you got four hundred and something drops instead of a hundred and something, so.
Oh yeah, quite a bit more money.
But I, in Parrow and Valley, I can speak for Parrow and Valley, I think everybody pretty much knows about it. As soon as two or three of them got them, you know, it's like, when I got one, it's like, what's that, you know? So, anyway.
You have one? You have a LEPA? How do you like yours?
Love it, yeah. Yeah, that particular well, uh, we had trouble with this year and.
Mic, microphone, sorry.
I'm sorry. That particular well, um, we were having some trouble with it. Didn't put out as much water and the, and the uphill side of that particular pivot is kind of sandy and it did, actually did better this year than it has in the past. It just shows how much efficiency there is and I would, I kind of tend this side of the valley and it's over here and I drive over and say, why isn't that pivot on? Cause you can't see it. It's so lower to the ground. If you got even just a little bit of, uh, of, uh, alfalfa growing, it just hides it. So it's just almost zero wind loss. It's just, it's wonderful, so.
You find it's better, once the, where it's watering under to the canopy, do you find that's a, a good thing? It, it helps with evaporation?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Shalom, that's good to hear.
Uh, another project, uh, kind of along the same lines, um, is, uh, that Chad started was a project where we were putting watermark, soil moisture meters, uh, or devices in some producers' fields so that they could timely, um, apply their water based on soil moisture content, not necessarily on crop response. Um, and that's been a huge, um, savings for some of these producers as well. We've had comments. We don't have any, again, statistics to back any of this up yet, but. We don't have any, again, statistics to back any of this up yet, but we've been getting comments, um, especially out around enterprise where. Producers are saving several trips across the field with their sprinklers, um, and increasing their return. Economic return because they're not having to pump water, uh, and their, their yields are maintaining. So, um, that's pretty exciting work and we, uh, hope to, to do more work along those lines. And in, uh, increase the number of water marks that we put out. It's pretty easy to train the producer to go out and push the button on the water, on the watermark and see where the soil profile is. In terms of the amount of water that's available, so. It's been a really neat project. So, something that's not on your, uh, why we're talking about water and, and this is a really new development, because, uh. Again, it's part of the research that we're doing with the Utah State, um, Extension Specialists. We have a consortium of specialists up there that have put together, again, a large grant. We just put up a, um, linear move sprinkler, um, about at S U U Farm. So we're doing some real collaborative work with S U U now, um, which is pretty exciting. If the, the linear move, the advantage to that is that it doesn't pivot in the center. Uh, and trying to do irrigation research and crop research, it's a lot nicer to work with a straight field. And a sprinkler that just moves linearly down the field. So we'll be able to get more information, more data, because we don't have to adjust nozzle sizes or pressure or any of that. Uh, like you would a center pivot. So, uh, we're re- really excited about that and, and the work that's gonna happen from there.
Is it the type that just drags the hose and you have to go out there occasionally and?
Yeah, it, yeah, yeah, so it, and it, this, uh, system, there's several different systems, but this particular system is all. Uh, electric, so we've got, because we have a really good power source right there, so right next to that substation. And so it's dragging a huge extension cord and a huge hose, so, you know. And then to talk about the Cedar Mountain Initiative, there's been a pretty steep learning curve for me on that. Um, but, uh, we have funded three projects this past year. Uh, unfortunately, the, uh, graduate student that was doing some of the surveys of some of the Aspen stands. Uh, got, uh, ill and, and, uh, did not complete her summer work this year. But, uh, hopefully we'll do some more field work and, and still have funding to complete that, uh, survey. Stan Kitchen has completed his work with the Ponderosa Fire Scars. Uh, Charles K. has also completed his work, so. Uh, we're still working with Cedar Mountain Initiative, um, and, and funding some of those projects as well. Karen Mock, uh, researcher from Utah State, has got a, quite a bit of research going on, on the, uh, Brian Head Fire Scar. And we're s- supporting some of the funding for that as well.
So what kind of things is she looking for on that scar?
Just, uh, pretty much regeneration and genetic, um, diversity within the, the Aspen stands that come back. Yeah, so. And I think that's. I'll, I'll jump real quick. Uh, Ca- um, Kathy's gonna get to the 4H report. I just wanted to mention the fact that. The livestock, Southwest Junior Livestock Show and Sale obviously took place. I'm not gonna take any credit for that. I just show up to the meetings and, and, uh. Give my input, but I give very little input so far, but anyway, we, we did pull that off and it was a record-setting sale. So that, that was probably one of our biggest concerns as a committee is, you know, who's gonna have money to buy livestock, uh, in support of 4H kids and. Tremendous community support, so we've, uh, over a six hundred eighty-six thousand dollar sale, so that was pretty impressive. And then I'm also on a committee for the Heritage Festival, because that was kind of Chad's brainstorm and, or child. And, uh, we pulled that off without, so, too many incidences either, so. Uh, we, we made COVID, um, adjustments, but, uh, we were really glad to be able to. To have this Cedar Livestock Heritage Festival as well, so. I didn't field any questions, but I'm probably out of time, so.
Exciting stuff. Thank you. Appreciate your report.
All right. Thanks, Randall. Uh, another person in our office is Candace Shibley. Who is over our Horticulture and Waterwise Landscaping Programs in the county. And what I would like to say about Candace is that if anyone was prepared to jump to virtual meetings. Webinars and reaching out to the public over, um, texts or other messaging. She is an expert and we can all learn from her. She just grabbed onto that and has done great programming. I want to just mention a couple of things that, uh, she has been able to do. One of the things was a concern that we had early on in the spring. When we were shut down from being able to have face-to-face contact with the public. Was how are people going to get their plants and plant diseases identified? And Candace has a text number that's completely dedicated to people that will send a photo. And she can get a, a heads up on that. And she has put a, a phone. Stand on a microscope where she can blow up the picture and see in detail what's going on. It's, it's mind-blowing to me. But she actually conducted a survey of the people that used that service or those services from her. And overwhelmingly, people liked it. There were still twenty-nine percent of people that prefer coming into the office and having a face-to-face contact, which. We're able to do as well now, thanks to the Plexiglas we have. We can meet on either side of that and she can meet people there. She's happy to do that. Uh, we had a few people that didn't like either of those options. They liked up close and personal. But, um, Candace has gone with the flow and she's done some excellent programming. In the photos that are up here, um, the lower right-hand corner, you'll recognize that's behind the Visitor Center. Where the demonstration garden is set. And she's had, she has great success with volunteers to help come and weed and maintain that garden spot. I still miss the wildflowers that we used to have there. But it's a great opportunity for people to see waterwise landscaping. Any questions about what she's been doing?
Just a quick comment. I, Marie and I had a new tree that we'd planted, a fruit tree, and it was just doing weird things. Anyway, I ta- I called her. She said, send me a text, and I just had that taken care of so quickly. She gave me exactly the right instructions, so. I love doing it over that way, because, you know, who, I don't necessarily have time to take another trip, so, yeah, it was good. And she's, she's a very sharp gal.
She is. She's friendly and, um, people can really relate to her, so we're, she's a great asset to our office. Uh, as far as my area programming, I will say that, um, I'm probably one of the ones that was kicking. Against going off virtual when we were asked to do that. But we have had some successes that I'm quite encouraged over and, and. One of the things that, um, some of the people are taking good advantage of in our office is our freeze dryer. Alma had his first experience not too long ago, actually filling out the, filling the trays and getting those in the freeze dryer, so. Um, I don't know if he sampled any of the apricots, but.
My wife's been really avid on that, so anyway, I happened to go in there with her one day. It was, it was fun, so, yeah, it's a-
We have had, um, we, we were shut down for two or three months where we weren't able to have people come in. But when we got back into the, having open office and having people sign up for the, the freeze dryer. We've had eight different people use it twenty different times with about a hundred and seventy pounds of produce. Or other items that they have freeze dried. Now, we had a person in last week that, she said, this is, I'm bringing in to freeze dry what my husband wants to do. It was cheesecake, ice cream sandwiches, and Skittles.
That's a smart man right there.
And it's, it's, it was interesting.
Now, Marie's got a lot of Skittles bought. She hadn't got, taken them down yet, but I saw pictures of them now. It kind of expands and apparently it increases the flavor, so. I may, I may not get to the apricots, but I will get to the Skittles quickly.
We also, uh, I, I have ten staff that work in after-school 4H programming. And March thirteenth, I think it was, when the schools, uh, shut down for the rest of the school year. Uh, our programs were, our, our, our funding was halted. So, we've been able to get back up and running and gratefully, we still have contacts in the schools. There's a, a picture of an upper left-hand corner of our first event that we were able to have outside. That is called Lights On After School. Where we invited all of the families that were interested in participating in our program to come and have, uh, a meal. And they did human foosball. Over at the museum grassy area, which was a great fun. We had to a- send them home. They didn't want to leave. And then also when we were shut down from our programs, we worked with some other counties that have after-school programs and the state director of 4H. And we're able to create 4H at home kits in the lower left-hand corner. This, this is a sample of our plant presses that went out. And just in Iron County, we supplied. Let me get the number right here. Not seeing it right off the bat. It was. Anyway, over this, throughout the state, over twenty thousand kits were produced. We did forty-five hundred here in Iron County. That were distributed to any county around the state that wanted to have opportunities for kids to do meaningful activities at home. Uh, there's other things that I've been involved with that, um, I'll let you read in your, in the report that we've provided. I do want to. Quickly move on to our, our 4H and youth programs. We've now added, beyond 4H, it's now youth programs. And we have brought on a couple of new people in our office. Mike Isom is, he's a, a fairly recent graduate from S U U in technology. And he is helping us with our robotics teams and all of our social media and our website that we have and Facebook for our 4H programs. With the help of. Our, our Iron County Commission, specifically Paul and Cedar City Corporation. We now have also Cindy Rose, who works for the Five County Association of Governments, but she's now also working with. Youth Service Learning and combining with our 4H Team Council and other youth in helping us get more service out in the community. And then, uh, this will be presented to you later on by Jennifer Bradbury. We have offered, and the offer's been accepted, for a new 4H coordinator. And her name is Emma Whitmore, who will be starting December first. And we're excited to have her. Here's a few highlights. Um, down in the middle, you'll see our Angela Hackwell. Who will be hard to replace. I mean, we won't replace her, but we hope to have someone come on board that will be equally excited. And enthusiastic about meet, reaching youth and training volunteers. This is how she would present embryology. Is dress up as the chicken lady. And if you look closely down underneath the table, she would wear rubber gloves as her feet. So, anyway, so we're gonna miss Angela and luckily she's still in the community and we can access her expertise. We do have a, a page on the written report about donations that we've received for our, to our office and our programming. We feel fortunate that we have community support. We actually now have a new supporter with Molina Healthcare for our 4H after-school programs, which we're grateful for. You can see our numbers for our 4H program and participation. And I didn't put this picture up here, but the commissioner's also, on the last page, you have a picture of a couple of freeze dryer trays. And anybody recognize what those are?
Onion.
Good guess? They're beets. Those are freeze-dried beet slices, beet chips. For those that go vegetarian, more healthy, um, we had a family that did three different batches of beet chips. And teach their own, right? Uh, we do want to thank the commission this year for, um, the support of our budget for our department. We feel like we've done very well in being able to keep within our budget overall and look forward to another positive year coming up. And one of the things we're really thankful for is that we get Christmas lights this year. So, thanks for putting those on our building this year. That'll be great. Now we can be almost as up and classy as the Visitor Center. Almost. Any-
Visitor Center, did you, where did you get your lights? Did you, did the? Did you? Okay. Because I know the, um. Cedar City had a lot of, uh, LED lights left over that were the wrong color, so they gave them to the, to the Visitor Center. Or the, or the, no, the heritage, no, the, the, um, the museum.
Suma?
No. Frontier Homes, yeah.
Anyway.
I have some leftover too.
We're, we're grateful for any leftovers there are, so. I will mention quickly, um, a couple of concerns that we have. We reported earlier in the year that we had some vandalism on a couple of our office vehicles for slash tires. And, um, we reported those to the Cedar, Cedar City Police Department. They researched it and they were never able to find the person. Uh, the pictures that were on the video camera from our Iron County I T. Were a little bit blurry. They were posted, but we didn't get anybody come forward with, uh, an identification. And with our inability to have classes inside, we also, uh, put up a couple of, well, we put up a tent. And as nice as that is to have that space, we are now finding that some of the transients are using the space. So that has not turned out to be as positive or. A deal as we thought it would be, so we may end up having to take those back down. But, um, we were trying our best to make it possible for people to still do programming and meet outside. Cause that was still legal. Anyway, any questions or comments?
No, whatever we can do to help you, we're always, yeah, I, I've told you before, you guys aren't the squeaky wheel, so, so. I, I mean, there's no drama that goes over, over there, so please don't hesitate to call when there's issues and.
We, we can create some if you'd like, Mike.
We've got enough, but. But, but, but please don't hesitate to call when you have any issues. We're, we're on it.
Thanks so much.
We appreciate you guys.
Well, we appreciate you guys. Thank you so much. And I guess we need to have a conversation, Mike, later? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, commission reports. Commissioner Blake?
Um, I, I do actually. Um, a couple of things. The first one is the, is the, uh. Our use of the COVID testing tent with Inner Mountain. Um, whether this is good or bad, I think it's, I think it's ultimately a good thing. Uh, we're about the only county in the state that worked with our local testing center and the Instacare to try and provide them. With facilities to be able to be in, out of the weather, you know, all, first of, first off, we started with the yellow tents that we borrowed. Actually from the Church of Scientology, uh, and then through our COVID money, we were able to purchase. A couple of large vaccine-type tents, and one of those has been deployed with Inner Mountain. We are de- un- undeploying it. We're, we're, we're taking that tent down today. Inner Mountain realized, I, I don't know if the right thing to say is Inner Mountain's decided that they needed to step up. Uh, in all of their centers, but Inner Mountain is actually going to provide, uh, Conex Box offices with drive-up windows. That are a little more permanent, um, for their facilities. Uh, their main concern was that their facility in, I don't remember, it was up north. I don't remember if it was in Salt Lake or Ogden, but they had a, a person. Actually have a seizure while they were in line. Their vehicle went out of control and mowed over their testing center. Put about ten of their employees in the hospital. And so their concern was that they wanted some more permanent structures. The good thing is, is that they're deploying those at all of their testing centers. Uh, so we are taking down the tent today. And a more permanent structure is coming in, so. But I, I want to publicly thank, uh, George Colson, our emergency manager, has been very involved in that. Kate Garfield, the manager at the Instacare. We've worked hand-in-hand this whole time. And we've used, uh, the fire department as, and their crew as the, the muscle. In, in deploying and, and, and doing a lot of these things, so a lot of thanks go out to the fire department for that. Secondly, uh, Mindy Benson- Um, secondly, uh, Mindy Benson at Southern Utah University reached out, oh, about a week ago. For, uh, during, you know, the governor's latest mandate mandated that universities test all of their on-campus students once a week. Uh, what that is looking like at Southern Utah University is, is possibly two thousand students a week uh, to be tested. And Mindy reached out and just said, "Let's talk about this." Uh, she's like, "I have no idea what we're going to do." Uh, so we collaborated with SUU, uh, got Kate involved at the, at the InstaCare, kind of put our heads together and came up with the following. Basically, the InstaCare, the, the state provides all of those quick tests to SUU. Uh, the InstaCare offered to provide training to nursing students and rural health scholars within SUU. And so, basically what we've done is we've taken the nursing students at SUU, uh, and, and made them the testers. Some training and, and basics of how to do that were provided by Inner Mountain. Uh, it does a couple of really cool things. Um, the, the rural health scholars, nursing students are required to have so much volunteer time, uh, or patient hours. They have to have patient access. This goes toward those requirement hours in their programs. Um, where Iron County got physically involved, other than just coordinating that, uh, Southern Utah University didn't have any protective equipment, um, at that short notice. So, we provided them with three thousand sets of gowns, masks, face shields, gloves. Uh, we delivered those out of our, out of our stock to Southern Utah University so that they could start that program immediately. They have in turn have all of the replacement stuff ordered and they're going to donate that back to Iron County to refill, uh, what we provided them upfront. And then they'll continue to, to supply those things. But, uh, George took over a truckload of three thousand gowns, masks, gloves, face shields, everything that they needed to, to start that immediately. Um, as of, I met with, I met with him on Friday, Thursday or Friday, uh, just to see how things were going. It was really interesting. They've got a positive test rate of about, uh, three, they tell me three percent or six percent. I can't remember. It's not important. But what they did find, so they have two sections set up. They have a, a testing center for, uh, folks that, that are, that have, uh, have symptoms. And then they have the other, you know, no, uh, non-symptomatic testing center. They've actually tested, they've had about twenty positives. Sixteen of those twenty came from the non-symptomatic side. So, those were kids that had zero symptoms, had no idea that they were COVID-positive, but they were able to get those quick test results back and quarantine that group of students so that they didn't have the opportunity to spread it any further. So, it, it appears that that's been really successful, you know, as far as, they've identified at least sixteen positive students and been able to take them out of the equation prior to them infecting anybody else. So, that's been a cool project. Uh, especially to see them deploy, like, you know, in a, I mean, literally in less than a week's time. But they're, they're, they're doing a great job.
So, when they have to quarantine students and they're living in a dorm or something, they send them home or what do they?
They have the option. They're, I don't believe they have any, um, they, they don't have any policy as to whether they, you know, have to quarantine in their dorm. What we found is that most students, as soon as they test positive, are going home. I don't know if that's good or bad because we're, I mean, taking, we're, we're taking those students and we're sending them elsewhere. But the, the overwhelming amount of students that, and are going home and quarantining back home and let mom take care of them. Uh, whether that's good or bad, I, I don't know. It's not something that we really have any control over, but... But we are, it does seem that they are identifying it early and, and hopefully taking those folks out of the equation before they even knew they were sick. They just showed up because they said we, we're testing students now. They came and, and, uh, and tested, you know, sixteen positive tests. The, the student had no idea, no indication, would not have tested otherwise, so. I guess that's a good thing. We're, we're happy to help them with that project. The, the third one I want to talk about, this, this could have been a real, I mean, this could have been catastrophic for Iron County earlier in, uh, this played out over the course of last week. Um, I got a call on Tuesday-ish, uh, from George Coulson, who had been talking with Nick Holt, the manager of the Cedar City Airport. Nick indicated that he received an email from the FAA basically stating, uh, there's a conference call Tuesday at twelve-thirty to discuss pulling the engineers and contractors that are finishing their airport runway project. Due to COVID concerns, the FAA is going to pull their engineer and, uh, and pull their contractors and send them back to Texas prior to having the project completed. Um, the, what is left, we, we've got about three weeks left of, of lighting. Basically, the Mauser lights, uh, and the other ones that I can't remember their names. But anyway, we have to, i- i- if we were to lose those lighting systems prior to them being completed, uh, we couldn't land planes after dark if there were certain wind or adverse weather conditions. Uh, we could have lost potentially fifty to sixty percent of our nighttime commercial flights until an indeterminate amount of time. That, I mean, literally, that's all the notice we had was a, was an invite to a, a conference call saying we're pulling your, we're pulling the project. I jumped on the phone with Dr. Blodgett and what the, well, I talked to Nick and basically they said, is, Nick called and said, "Is there anything that we can do to show that we are not the rest of the world?" The, the, you know, some of our local statistics and some of our local things going on to prove to, to the FAA that we can continue this project. I called Dr. Blodgett and said, "Would you be, you know, what have you got to say for yourself? What have you got to say for us, Dave?" He says, "I am more than willing to jump on that call in the event that they care what I have to say." Uh, the FAA did not care what Dr. Blodgett had to say. Uh, the FAA said, "We get our statistics from Harvard. Harvard University tracks this disease and that's the only people we're going to listen to." It is Harvard University. Harvard University, because of, uh, the latest information from the governor's office, has determined that Utah is red area and we are going to pull our contractors. Um, Nick was able to fast-talk them at least enough for them to delay that decision from Tuesday to Thursday morning. We got on the phone immediately with Adam Snow from Representative Stewart's office, who then got on the phone with, uh, Senator Romney and Senator Lee's offices. Um, we provided, uh, some, a really detailed, a, a really detailed report of what was going on. We got those to those offices. Uh, we just, we happened to have airport board meetings scheduled on Thursday morning. Adam Snow attended board meeting and when board meeting was over, Adam and Nick and I jumped in the airport truck uh, and went and did kind of a really detailed tour so that Adam could have eyes on what the problem was. And Adam was sending real-time information back to DC. Our legislative, you know, our, I just can't say enough about, uh, Chris Stewart and, and our two senators. Uh, they got on it immediately. Um, I don't know exactly what they did, but the Thursday at twelve-thirty phone call from the FAA, uh, they reversed their decision and allowed the, uh, allowed the, the operation to continue. Uh, that would have, it would have been catastrophic to our airport, to our tourism, to our business travel. Uh, I mean, that, it would have shut us down for the winter. Nick was concerned that we may have stepped on some toes. There, there's different FAA offices involved. He was worried that we were gonna make someone mad along the way and there'd be fallout in the end. Uh, we made sure that that wasn't the case. In fact, the FAA Division Office out of Denver said, "That was a great use of your legislative representation." Uh, that's what they're there for and, and, and it worked out really good. The other thing that it did, uh, we've had one certifying flight already uh, that came to certify the lights. Uh, all of the instruments checked out. Everything was fine. The pilot said, "Well, there is some weird glare and I'm not gonna certify the lights." We only had funding for one flight. Uh, after a, a, during this whole, we said, "Hey, as long as we're at it, let's appeal this." Uh, the FAA, after speaking with the, the legislative delegation, refunded our money on the, on the original flight, uh, which means basically we don't have to pull money out of the airport operating budget to accomplish that, and so we have another certification flight coming. So, I would, we're hoping that before Christmas, our airport is completely FAA-certified, the lighting and everything else, uh, and we move on. Uh, but it was, I, I mean, it was a bad deal there for a minute. It, it was, it was a bad deal there for a minute. I, that's really a testament to our relationships with our legislators. Uh, the relationships that we have in those offices, uh, with Representative Stewart. Um, I really want to, Adam Snow went to bat. He, he dedicated a whole bunch of time over a couple of days, including a trip here, uh, to work on that issue. I would just want to thank our congressional delegation. George Coulson was in that mix. Uh, Nick Holt at the airport was in that mix. Was awesome.
Very good.
Was awesome.
Thank you.
I actually prepared a short video, but I'm gonna forego that now. Maybe we can watch it at the end of commission meeting just because we're so far out of time and I really, looking at the agenda, I think we'll catch up. But I'll, I'll, I'll forego that till the end of the meeting.
Okay.
In the interest of time.
I don't have anything, thanks. Nothing exciting like that. That's great.
Yeah, many thanks, Mike, for your efforts and the, our delegation. That's great. We talked about, the three things I had was the senior center. We talked about that. Um, the ice rink, we, we mentioned, Maria mentioned that they're filling that up and that's moving along. And a lot of people are really excited about that. There's a lot of people that remember that from the, I guess, back from the seventies that used to skate up there, so a lot of folks are, are really excited about that. So, um, yeah, one thing I wanted to mention was the, uh, we're well underway on, on the water project out of Quichapah. And just to explain that a little bit. Um, and going clear back to the BLM, I want to give a shout-out to the BLM, Paul Briggs, Michelle Camp, Campo, is it Campo?
Campo.
Campo. Michelle and Dan, Dan Fletcher. They literally, literally moved mountains to get that approved, that we could get working out there while it was dry in the lake bed. And it, um, they pulled some major strings, um, maybe even as much as a year's weight on that project. And so, we really appreciate the BLM. Um, I know the Water District is very grateful to the county for providing equipment. Curtis DeMille's been out there digging, uh, with the, with the excavator. Um, we, Preston let us take this, the D-seven out to the landfill and then we took, uh, Bruce Anderson's eight out to that project, D-eight. And, and that, that machine can move twice as much dirt, so it's been really helpful. But, um, basically what this project is, as the water goes out to Quichapah down the, down the canal, back in two thousand seventeen, when I was on the waterboard, we put in a diversion structure where it diverts the water down a ditch parallel to fifty-six. It would go down to the Smoots Pond on the south side of fifty-six. Um, and then it would go under four culverts into the Lazy River where it would drop the sediment and it would be piped up to the recharge basin. The Water District last year, uh, ended up piping that water to the Joneses' pivots. There's two pivots out there that they grow alfalfa. And, uh, rather than try to recharge that, which is difficult, it works, but it's slow. We could only do a minimal amount of, of like five CFS per day. And so, um, they ended up piping that water right into their pivots. And so, what, what they do is they, they pressurize their pivots when they have water available and those farmers are able to idle their wells. And that's in effect a hundred percent recharge, which is very efficient. And it's, it's, it's been a win-win because the, the Joneses, Kerry and, and, um, Craig Jones and the, um, Brad Smoots and Tyree Bullock, they've been really, really generous, uh, offering their property free of charge to basically let the Water District do whatever they wanted, so it's been really, really neat. But anyway, this diversion structure, back in two thousand seventeen, we cut a spillway that, that, there was one night, we were working out there late and it was raining and we were afraid we were gonna lose the temporary dam that Curtis had built back then and wipe out the construction project. And so, we hurried and dug a spillway and it formed a small lake that was up higher than Quichapah. It was kind of a natural basin there. It was really kind of neat. And we, we noticed there was a lot of waterfowl flock to that, that lake that, that had been created. And, um, so it kind of gave us the idea to, to, uh, create a conservation pond. There's a lot of willows and things, so we actually built that dam up a lot higher. And, uh, rather than be like a hundred-acre-foot da, uh, lake, it's probably gonna be about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-foot, uh, acre-foot lake and, uh, be a really nice waterfowl, um, conservation a- area there. And then, so the water will actually go from the diversion structure down the ditch and then it'll actually divert into that conservation lake. And then there'll be a spillway that'll flow down into Quichapah. And we had originally thought about, the Water District had originally thought about building a reservoir there, but then somebody had a great idea to, well, let's just, if we can get permission from the BLM, let's just build a dam or a dike across Quichapah. It's about a half a mile long. And so, for the last few weeks, we've been building that and, um, making really good progress. It's pretty much done. We've probably got another week or maybe even two weeks to finish that up. But Curtis, so, so basically, the clean water will go into the, into the north end of the lake. The TDS, which is total dissolve, dissolvable solids, is not as high on that end of the lake as the south end, so that water stays cleaner and the farmers can pump that up and, and use it. We'll pump it right out of Quichapah. Any water that ends up there, we'll pump it right up to the, uh, it actually, Curtis does dug two big trenches, Curtis DeMille, that will flow the water down to the Smoots Pond. We'll pump it into that. It'll flow under and go through the same system. And then we'll be able to use that water that's normally just been wasted, which would evaporate and go away. So, it's been a good project and like I said, the, the, the district has been very grateful for the county. I appreciate, uh, Preston and, 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 um, Curtis DeMille and everybody involved in, you know, helping get that project done. It's gonna be a really a win-win for the basin and, and that's one of our most declining aquifers is the Quichapah. It's, it's where Cedar City pulls the lion's share of their water out of. And so, it's, it's gonna be a, another great project, so we appreciate that. So, that's my report. Um, we'll take a, let's take a ten-minute break. We'll resume this meeting at twenty minutes, too. We need to read these as well?
Don't remember if I ever changed it.
Okay. So, read this and then we'll go into a public hearing? We'll open up, so read this and then do a public hearing? Okay. Okay, read this and then take comments and, okay.
Watch this. I'm gonna send you-
Perfect.